Give me a thumbs up when you're ready. Stand for members' hands to pledge the flag.
I pledge my ladies and gentlemen of the United States of America, and to your father for which stands one nation, I am proud, and to this world, for which we're deemed just as a crown.
Can we roll call please?
This is Kucio.
Yep.
Mr. Perez.
Here.
Mr. Hagan.
Here.
Ms. Lynn.
Here.
Mr. Kennedy.
Here.
Ms. Miller.
Here.
Ms. Ronan.
Here.
Ms. Turner.
Here.
Ms. Wade.
Here.
That's nine present.
Thank you. So it's fine. We have a presentation. Scott, forward. So if you're ready, you can go first. You're first up.
Would you like me to stand up?
Whatever you want to do.
You can put.
This is easier for me to see than that.
Yeah, I felt in the unders in case that was down. If you don't mind me standing up, it's easier.
The microphone's right here for public, so that's your best.
You don't mind me. It would be easier for me if I could. I'll just, I won't touch the screen, but.
Okay.
This is three degree road and Doc's Way and current Davidson Road where it goes Chief's Way. I think what the school and township are proposing is to cut through the field and tree line and realign the road, Davidson Road, so that it makes a plus intersection with Doc's Way. We came up with, I think, three different layouts to try and make it a tighter radius at first. And then Mike said, as long as we can get viscous course in that area, try to make it as smooth as possible for the buses. Exactly what I did. Right now, I don't know if you care or not, but it's like a 52-foot tangent, 200-foot radius, back to another 200-foot radius, and then it ties them to current Davidson. This triangle right here would be the relay out viscous, and I ended up getting 215-foot lengths, which Mike tells me is, if a high school gets thrown 215 feet, it should be. Right. I have, I laid out parking here because Mike said that we're interested in having parking. I just kind of generic laid out parking. It's not part of the project, but just to prove that it could be done and to show where your access would be. It would be on to current Davidson, which would be renamed, possibly Chief's Way. There's driveways that would remain on that Chief's Way. And one driveway that's affected over here that would connect up to new Davidson.
You might as well do one of the other ones.
Yes. Probably the next one would be great. But this one I highlighted, just showing the black is the roads. The pink is what would get removed from Davidson to eliminate the connection through. The yellow or gold is the sidewalks that would be involved with the township's project. And the green is what would be your responsibility. Parking sidewalk connecting up to the crosswalk, a fence along Davidson and the viscous. Generally, I mean, I'm sure there'll be some things back and forth. Any questions?
The fence is something the district's gonna have to put up along that side.
I think so. I mean, your discussions. I did show like the backstop or whatever you call it for viscous. I think it would control the kids from throwing it towards the road, but I definitely don't think we want any chance of the viscous going towards the road.
One question, if that parking lot, of course, would not be designed to be paved, because we don't have any stormwater controls, correct? Would have to be. Like if that was made for the.
Correct. I mean, underground tanks are, we're coming.
Not getting into crazy expense.
Right. We're, we're part of, you know, everybody's not aware of the township's redoing all three degree road. And it's part of that, you know, PennDOT stops their project somewhere down in here. We'll be extending it up and we'll be adding stormwater or storm sewers. So you would.
But the gravel parking lot did it. That's considered a purpose.
Correct. So would we need to do retention facility with that much square footage? Probably, probably. So then, yeah.
Or an inlet connecting to stormwater.
Yeah, that was to call.
Yeah, it's still, technically you'd need stormwater and then connected.
Yeah, yeah. You know, I had mentioned to Mike that as part of our project, I would imagine the contractor that has phase one is Shield State. I think there's a hot potential that Shield State will get phase two. But regardless, I think the contractor would be looking for a place for a lay down area that they could work from while they do phase two of three degree road. I think that would be a great option for them if it was available. If it would get the trees removed for you, possibly, I mean, you would get some gravel put in there, possibly.
I thought the trees were all gonna come out.
That, I, I, I don't, I don't get involved.
Yeah, but we thought the run, that was gonna come out. We were gonna see where the cost was. But you're suggesting that we offer that for a lay down area in exchange for a base for the contractor.
Yeah, right.
If we're comfortable with that, then Scott will do that.
Yeah.
At the end of the day, we know that there's no parking anywhere, so we need to add parking. We need to add sidewalks to keep it safe when they're trying to run and do all their cross country to the park. It's a cost word. We have to pay for safety.
I think the way this is gonna work out is we're putting in three degree as if Davidson is not getting realigned. We're putting it out for bid that way. We're gonna make this an alternate bid. And the alternate bid will include the realignment of the road, tree clearing, the sidewalk, all the things that go along with it. And I think the township has thrown a figure that if it goes for a figure that they've allotted for it, that's great. If it's above that, then they would talk, they would talk to you, but you know, it would be up to you if you wanna partner in it or whatever. I'm not involved in the financing.
Long term, it makes sense to do this if it's.
Yeah.
Part of the alternate bid that we're gonna put into it is, well, I think it's regardless, we're gonna have the solar powered flashing lights that you come up, push the button and give you a crosswalk. Just keep in mind, once the new middle school project goes through, all those buses are now coming into the intersection. So it really needs to be lined up or it would be, you can imagine both of those intersections that close together trying to get buses in and out. I mean, the bus goes halfway across the road and tries to turn that way.
More than 400 parents drive their kids to school. I can't believe there are more crashes there in and out. Just what happens to all the people who live on the front and the effect of their drivers? Like, are we responsible for any of that cost?
They're gonna provide.
The way it's gonna work out is we have two driveways right here, and they'll still connect up to what we're calling Chief's Way. Won't be a change for them. It'll just, they won't have 30 cars going past their driveway whenever they're pulling out. They'll still pull out. It's like they always did. And we have one other driveway right here. If you can see where the pink is not, that we'd have to extend, you know, 20 feet.
Yeah, the pink is just to show that the road's not.
Not there anymore.
Yeah, we put Jersey barriers up or whatever.
Yeah, we got, yeah, Jersey barrier or plant trees in this area where we remove the asphalt so that people don't keep going the same way they always have. You know, the township already has a road right away through this section of Davidson. Would need a 50-foot road right away from you that would become feasible proper for the township. No, it's really like even this one, it's like the intersection with Meredith slightly affected some property owners. Talking like about it, keep working through that. This one really, it doesn't change them because there's still access to the road regulations. I was involved with Doc's Way whenever you constructed it, and I know that they had to keep going back in and increase those road radiuses. It looks like they're now to about a 35-foot road radius right, radius around where they connect. So I just went like 35-foot radius returns on the new Davidson. We did bus template passing templates on this, and they failed at a 24-foot width with width road, which is what the township requires. So we had to go up to a 28-foot wide road.
Turning radius, if you're moving that new section of Davidson making a right.
Yep.
Did you do, did you do a study analysis to make sure that bus, the bus across over, over median?
Yeah, they're not any, any worse than they ever do.
Okay, does it really? Because right now they actually pull onto the opposing lane.
Yeah, but, but any intersection you go to, the school bus, it depends on the drive.
No worse than the usual.
Right. I mean, no pass of template, but you go to any intersection and your buses are crawling.
Is, is this a four-way stop or is this just?
It's gonna be a two-way stop. It'll be Davidson and Doc's Way will have stops, at least initially. And three degree will be a blow through. That's why we're gonna have the push button for the crosswalks.
Somebody could be like. So will their guessing of the school zone, 50 mile an hour school zone, the whole way on Davidson now with the new? Well, does it have the access to the middle school now that's met? That's not gonna be added?
That would be a discussion. I, I would think it would possibly make sense, but I haven't seen.
Do you have any idea what the estimated cost would be on the stretch for the stuff that's in there in like a parking lot?
Hopefully, we'd get the contractor to use the area and at least create a base source to reduce that cost. And I don't know whether he's even paid it. It's gravel, it's gravel. Better than what's there. You're working the grass. It's dark right now. Could you just show them where the, where the outfield fences? I really think it's real light on there.
Oh, yeah. Can we go back to one of the other ones? There we go. So here's, here, this, there's the triangle, and right here is the outfield fence. So it's, looks like at this end, it's probably about 40 feet away. At this end, it's probably about 25 feet.
And this project, like you said, starts this year, right?
Both of them.
We're putting this, we're putting it out.
This other intersection.
Yeah.
We'll start working in May.
You already have that out the bid.
Right. Just bring it on work tonight.
Okay. And this alternate bid, if it's approved, would, would be out of it.
With the little section beside that, that high jump, or the, oh, would it be cleared? Those trees could be cleared out.
So right here, you could leave this stand of trees on the south side of the new Davidson. But from, the project needs at least a swath through the roadway to be cleared. And I think Mike's pushing for this whole parking lot area to be cleared as well. These ones, there's no reason.
Issue with that at all?
Yeah, those trees are bad. I mean, there might be some limbs that could use trimmed, but there's a tree over. Say distance problems. There is a utility pole that would need relocated if we go with 35-foot radius returns. We pretty much keep all the utilities where they are until they fail and then we could realign what Davidson, that we're having. Your current, I think this concrete spot right here is where you're going from now, and it would be ripped out. Probably would want it ripped out.
Those are all new over the new man you said. The platforms are, all need three percent.
The little bit that Mike taught me about viscous, it looks like they're kind of aged.
Any other board questions? Anyone from the public have a question? Does anyone on the Zoom public have a question about this particular project? Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to agenda, board reports. Kevin, did you have a foundation report?
Yes. Marsh Planet Foundation met here in the boardroom on March 15, and we established our committee chairs for the coming year. We did receive all the scholarship applications the foundation will be awarding and we'll be reviewing those for the next several weeks and present to the, present the winners the award ceremony on May 4th. Our next study is April 19th.
Thank you. Other board reports. Sally, you wanna give a report about that, I think you're a board member to work there?
Yes, yes. So we usually in the past, the board has had association set up where the board is allowed to go to school with teachers that offer to take part in this program each year. We haven't been able to do it the past two years because COVID. So those of us, I think John's the only one that would have ever been able to experience this before. So Mrs. Littmick, you was kind enough to set up a bunch of different teachers that made themselves available to us to take a board member to school day. So I was able to go on Monday, yesterday morning, to Mrs. Shine's first grade classroom. And it was really fun to get in there. We said the pledge of allegiance, and then we said the PC pledge, which I was unaware of, which was really cute. And then Mr. Sliwa came in and said hello and good morning to the kids. The kids unanimously said, hello, Mr. Sliwa. So excited. It was really cute. And he said, welcome back from the weekend. And Mrs. Shine said he does that every morning in each classroom, which I thought was really to be able to have a good plot of relationship with the kids. That's the principle of the firing center. So that was really great. And then Mrs. Shine went through, did spelling, we did vocabulary, spelling and reading, and covered, you know, sound. And she did a great job. I will say I was really thoroughly impressed with how much she got through in a short amount of time, not morning, with the kid. They just, they just keep going. And she was, she was really good and I was very, very impressed. And she did some fun things, which I liked. She had the kids, every time they all said something, she'd have them all repeat words or whatnot. She'd do these cute things where she said, okay, let's all do the round the world. They all stop round the world. But let's do roller coaster. And they all knew all these moves. It was really cute. I'm trying to think of some of the other ones I wrote down. Some notes, they did high fives, the rocket, you know, and then the silent dance party. It was really cute. You totally love it. And it keeps them engaged. So she kind of had their attention by doing that. And then she had to sit up in a reading position before they got ready to read everyone books down. And I, I mean, I just really impressed. And I enjoyed it immensely, even sitting in my really tiny chair. I appreciate Mrs. Littmick organizing it and Mrs. Shine coming to the classroom and all the kids. They were, they were a really good class. I was impressed.
Thank you. Other board members?
So I had the pleasure of shadowing Mrs. Morello. I learned a lot, and she didn't stop talking for about five hours, I think. Never sat down for months other than to eat lunch with me very quickly. I think the biggest, I heard the dying copier. So if you're on there, Mrs. Morello, it's gonna be fixed soon. I think the biggest takeaway for me was just actually watching how hard they work and then knowing that that's just not the only thing that they have to do, right? So they have pair emails. So I'm gonna not email Ms. Waters hopefully for the rest of the year, which is my daughter's teacher. I'm just very grateful. I mean, she literally had a 20-minute, which, you know, that was about it, that she got by the time the kids got out there and settled. I learned that the, the lunchroom is very loud. The kids are screaming, you know, they're probably like, finally, like I can get out of this classroom. It's amazing. Like, they're in their seats a lot, like, you know, and so it really gave me a perspective of, you know, when my child comes home from school after having sat all day long. You know, the good news is they get to move, you know, they get to go here. They have a special here. They can now do centers, which is really nice. We got to break down into small groups. Several times when we were together, do different things, you know, learning techniques with math and different programs. It was nice to see all the smiles, all the kids' smiles and all their stuffy noses and paws going around. But overall, she's one amazing teacher. We are so, Dr. McMahon, she said you hired her. We're just really lucky to have our teachers that we have, including Mrs. Morello. So if she's listening, thank you.
Thank you. Kevin, yes?
Yeah, I visited Mr. Graff's math classes yesterday, and he was able to sit in on math setting, dance pre-algebra and geometry classes. It was really neat to see how to use some visual, had them visualize the math to get them to understand area volume concepts. Start off with a, a story that of his room being filled with bull and compared his room to his current room to his old room. It's done. Your oldest room, the sizes and how many more of it in his room. Took this stuff back to having desks, so the surface area and volume. Get them thinking about how, how, how much did the shapes change when you, with that scale factors and how, how those concepts are ready. He was actually teaching them to very high level math concept. Not all the classes, the students were engaged. They weren't afraid to ask questions. They had them. And one that's good right here without helping them choose is, is a good experience. I was happy that Mr. Graff.
Thank you, Kevin. So I assume everyone else has their schedule for next week or two. So we'll get more next week and in May, because I'm not gonna do it until later. So moving on to what the agenda, we did have a closed session prior to this meeting for personnel and legal. Just wanted to get that out of the way. Student council, I see no one from student council in the room, but it was right on Zoom for student council. I just want to check. So we'll probably catch up to them next week. They typically come next week for the voting session. Moving on to the agenda, we are public comment, agenda items only. Is there anyone in the room which have a public comment on agenda items only? Seeing none. I'm gonna look for the Zoom world. Is there anyone on Zoom that wishes to have public comment on agenda item only? Last chance on Zoom. Does anyone wish to have public comment on agenda item only? Seeing none. Moving on in the agenda, next week we will approve the minutes. Tonight, we'll need a motion for personals number one through 11.
Thank you so much.
Kevin, second. So have a first and a second. Board questions, comments?
I'm so sorry to see Miss New go. She's a speech therapist with the primary center. My son spent two years with her. We're very grateful for all the hard work she does.
I'm happy to see there's a squeeze of people on the others for God's sake. Hope my kids have a great teacher. Great questions. Apparently not too soon. Any other discussion, board? So on the main agenda, I just, we have a person, second for private personnel numbers one through 11. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? That passes. Moving on to finance, on this grant study, did you wanna speak about the pumping machine?
Yeah, number 20, I guess for your proposal this evening for contract issue with this solution to the copy services on Co-Stars contract. Looking at two options. We had presented originally, I thought it would be a 60-month, but I'm going to recommend the system three month contract. What this does is our current copiers, we've been having a lot of issues with them lately, last six months or so. We have a lot of breakdowns. I'm not, not able to get toner in. It is at the end of the cycle because September expires. The contract would be up the end of June, early July. So we look at different pricing. Co-Stars is state contract that they do RFP process, go through all of that. So Tashiwa is the vendor that, that we got a contract from. From then, their proposal was for 26 machines, which is two more than we currently have. So it's adding a machine, an A by paper and a copier to the elementary school and one to the primary center. We were able to increase the speed on 17 of the machines as well. We added color to one of them, and we added a paper cut software, which allows us to basically, anyone can print to any printer in the district. So you submit your job, you have to swipe in with your badge, and then you can print any copier. Just tap your badge and then it comes up and you can print on your job. So that's, we can also track total copies by, by machines. Well, right now, we have to rely on the vendor to give us that information. So now we'll be able to have that information. As long as we want to run it. So we were, originally I got the proposal, went back to them and asked them to sharpen a pencil on that. They originally had staples included. We now have staples included in the price. Because majority of the machines have stick lengths, so that will be included. So the contract would include everything, the copier rentals as well as all the supplies except for papers. Paper would be not included. So the proposal that I have here, you'll see 63 months saves the district $2,264 a year of what we're currently paying. So I'll be asking for your vote for that tonight. Just to give you the number of copiers that we're building. We've got three here at the admin building, eight at the high school, three at the middle school, three at Centennial, five at the elementary and four at the primary school. So that's against the 26. Any questions?
This, the paper cut software, the sort of, one of the things that seemed to this, we, we, if your teacher would use copier A, and copier A wasn't used, that you'd just send it then to cop B, cop B ran, collect their job there, whatever.
They don't, yes, yes. They don't have to send it. As soon as they can print, they can go to any copier and tap it and print it. So it's, it's just there waiting. It's in the print queue and it's.
She was cool with the jobs.
Yeah, so say you're a high school principal and you are, you come to a board meeting and you wanna print some stuff out. She can send them to print and then come over here and go to this machine and print it out over here.
And Tashiwa's gonna set them up and teach everybody.
Yes, they will come in. They'll, they'll do summer training with us. They'll be here when we go back to school. As often as we want to come in and do training. So the plan is that they'll, we'll do the implementation, we'll have training with staff that's here in the summer. And then we'll have them here for the in-service days at the beginning of school. Someone in each building will be there to answer questions, show them what they need to do.
You know, once just give return to whoever. And they pick those, people pick those up?
The proposal says that they will ship them back. We need to just, Ryan has to double check that with our current vendor to see if they want to come and get them or if they're okay with the current vendor, the new vendors making them back. So yes, that'll be taken care of. It's included in the price.
I think he's actually looking into this, Teddy. I feel like this is the favorite thing that really makes people's jobs frustrating with me is aren't able to do things. So.
I know. It's been frustrating. We've had.
It's been very frustrating.
We've had primary teachers up in my, up in my office printing job, printing stuff, probably the last month and a half. So, yeah.
I love the ability to be able to pull it. So somebody comes in, it's busy, they have a job to do.
Availability, we're good for them to be here.
That's why we wanted to get approved tonight. There's like a 90-day backlog on when, when you put the order in or items to deliver first. So we should, I suppose we shouldn't have a trouble getting them end of June, early July. So that's great news for us. The other thing was, one of the big issues we had with our current vendor is getting toner. Company that we've got, they manufacture their toner in the United States. So we should not be the issue. It's also for our time guarantee and there's just other things that are, they'll offer. Machine's gonna be down for more than a 24-hour period. They'll offer us a longer machine. So there's a lot of other things that, other things that are coming with it. I've had experience with the vendor. Ryan has as well.
I've also.
Yeah, they've all been very good experiences.
So under finance, can I get a motion for numbers 13 and 20? In a way, it's intended. We're gonna change it from 60 months to 16 months.
Yes.
Any other more questions, comments on finance? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Consider programs next week. Her voting is the grounds, and I have a motion to approve the number of 22.
I have a motion to add number buildings and grounds number two to the agenda.
I have one motion. Kevin, second.
And the reason for that is I had to have a discussion with the engineer today, so later get going.
I'm sorry, I missed two from the first one right now.
I'm gonna take it myself first. So I have a person, second, all in favor, aye? Opposed, nay? So now it's added to the agenda. Can I get a motion under buildings and grounds with numbers one and two?
Anthony, sir.
I have a person, a second. More discussion, comments?
Let the testing has been done.
I'm just wondering if a lot of the presidents know exactly what this says. It'll be at the number two, middle school access. Do they really know?
Well, we had a, we had a presentation because of the PennDOT project. We're gonna lose the entrance that's closest to 228 off Three Degree Road. It'll be a divided street there. And it's really the only other location we have is to go behind the baseball field and the MAC stadium and come into the middle school that way. So it's a thousand-foot access road. Meredith and Davidson.
That was the other intersection you were referring to on the.
Right.
On tonight.
Right. Forman had on this one.
But it won't affect all fields.
No.
It's just following that up.
There should be a few improvements along those areas.
Right.
And these will feel better handicap aisles, but it's same.
Any other board discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, aye? So on the main agenda, under other, um, we'll consider one through eight and number ten, if I can have a motion for number nine?
Mrs. May, it's a move. Do you have a second?
So moving on the agenda, public comment, open forum. Is there anyone in the room which have public comment at this point? Seeing none. We want the Zoom world. Is there anyone on Zoom who wish to have public comment? Open forum? Is there anyone on the Zoom that wish to have public comment at this point? Moving on the agenda, um, is there anyone from MAEA representative?
Good evening, everybody. You hear me? Good evening. Good evening.
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Okay, thank you. Um, the teachers would like to thank all the board members and upcoming board members who volunteered to participate in the Take a Board Member to Work. I'd also like to thank the teachers that we, as well. Um, we've been hearing some great feedback from the teachers that have already had visitors, and others are looking forward to their visitors coming. Um, they really do appreciate your help in the classroom, your participation, and any questions that are generated by, by the visit. Um, Mrs. Wick and I are currently working on setting up a spring ten-person meeting. Um, this is really a great opportunity for open discussion between the association, the board, and the administrators. Um, it's also a great way to see each other's perspec- perspective on the different issues. Um, teachers and students are um, preparing for the upcoming PSSA exams that start at the end of this month. Um, the um, elementary school was really fortunate to have an Irish dance assembly a few weeks ago for um, St. Patrick's Day. And um, the show included many of our current and former students, and we really enjoyed um, seeing our students show their, their talents. And I know our students enjoyed the assembly as well. Um, last week, we took our fourth graders to Centennial to, to um, tour um, in preparation for their move there next year. And um, the consensus is that they are most excited about having lockers. Uh, we would like to wish everyone a happy Easter, and wishing everyone a safe and relaxing spring break. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm administrative, Dr. Earth, I have nothing additional to say. Doctor, please.
Um, just as a reminder to our incoming, everybody knows that we're going to have our new backwater, welcome. Just trying to get back to school in these two years, so we'll have our watermelon welcome, which is going to be on May fourth. And um, we don't turn any students away, but an AM student will typically come to the AM session, because I'm only talking about the pickup and the distance, which is a very different process, it's a PM student. So AM, we can come to the AM session, PM students, we then come to the PM session. However, I do, there's like some other day teams and things like that coming in, and if we do come to the split session, that's fine, we'll figure it out, we'll work it, it's all fine. Um, and then the parents are just gonna RSVP by calling the office, um, the primary center, and that is the fourth of May. The watermelon, and then we have our pre-K assessment scheduled for Friday of thirteen, and um, and then that is a voluntary thing, where the more student, incoming kindergarten students, and the purpose for that assessment, it takes about a half an hour. We gave every parent a copy of that assessment, so we see exactly what you've been accomplishing, and it helps us to build kindergarten classes. Otherwise, we're kind of saying, oh, we're, 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 we're getting ideas, as to where our students are, instead of, so that's the pre-K assessment on the first. I'm excited to say that Dr. Kramer will be coming back with us on April twenty-first. We've been um, slowly moving foundations in. We had incorporated the kindergarten this year, and the, and the professional development piece now to rule that out officially um, in the twenty-twenty-two degree school year. So Dr. Kramer will come back with first grade on April twenty-first. And there, she's either going to model the foundation lessons, or she's gonna observe and give feedback, and it's basically the first grade teacher's choice. We did the same process for kindergarten, that wasn't really successful, so we're bringing back um, the first grade. And again, the full implementation in the twenty-two, twenty-two school year.
Um, do we have any news on the name of the road?
I just know, I know, I just give it up.
Might as well, I have.
So we, we, how we approached this, we had, okay, six, we surveyed the students in all of the art classrooms, and then grade seven through twelve, that went through a home, home survey. And um, there were a number of, number of different names, but the name that came to the top, that was repeated for a number of the buildings, was Nellie Way. So we're going to recommend that the town that listens to us and not, if they want to get the students in, but the students in the Mars area, the school district, um, by majority vote, have requested the name in the room, and Nellie Way.
And that's for the new road, it's going to be installed by night.
The town should ask for an idea, and the school should never consider that with other options, and see.
Students follow Nellie Way.
Thank you, thank you, Doctor. Uh, Ms. Bransitter?
I'm interested Monday, April eleventh is the finance committee meeting, I believe, in September, third. So that was a change from, originally was scheduled for the twelfth at six o'clock, so it moved to Monday, April eleventh, that might be.
Last week, I had an opportunity to attend the Pennsylvania Public Relations Association, I was in, finally, had been reskipped four times, so finally, we'll have a, it's a great opportunity to network with people in my position across the state, and to attend Professor Fell, an opportunity to help to provide her important feedback.
Thank you. Sounds like fun. I miss any administration, no one else. Great. Uh, board comments? Anyone wish to have board comments?
Hi, National Library Week, so thank you to our librarians, for all that you do, and April is autism, autism awareness, or acceptance, whichever you prefer to say. I'm excited that the district is having that open mic night, I don't know if you guys all saw, it's gonna be at the high school, it's on April twentieth at seven PM. You can go to the district's website to RSVP for that. I'm very excited that um, they are having something to celebrate.
I had the privilege of attending the indoor percussion, friends and family, uh, last week, it was Thursday night, it was a fantastic show. And then judges to recent competitions agree with that assessment, they placed second in the competition in Dayton, Ohio, on the twenty-seventh. And just this past week, they made up, played second again, the three-degree winter championship. Never seen it, uh, highly recommend it.
I have nothing to say, I know you're shocked.
I am kind of on the shock first.
Did you join, comfortable?
No, I'm gonna be there as soon as I can.
Yeah, double.
Any more comments, like?
Just encourage members of the public who have questions regarding school finance or the budget process to attend Monday's meeting, moved to Monday, we'll have more time, not backed up against the actual meeting. If the public has comments, I see comments online, very often people have questions regarding the financing, here's a great opportunity for the public to come in, ask you questions, and get a little better understanding of exactly how the budget process works. So just see if you can.
You good? All right, seeing, Tyler, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Any commission to adjourn?
Second. All in favor? We, we do not have a closed session, so.
We're done.
We're done.